All right, good evening all. Welcome to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing. Night Wednesday, December 4th, 2019. We opened at 7:00 PM here in the Griffin Meeting Room at Harwich Town Hall. We'll go through the agenda. We'll call the cases one at a time. The public will be invited to speak at the appropriate time. We are being video recorded and this hearing will appear on the Channel 18 YouTube website in a day or so. I'm going to ask our board members to please introduce themselves.
Jim Hilliard.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hederstedt.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
Chris Murphy.
And Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
Okay, I'm going to ask our clerk, Mr. Hederstedt, to call our first case, please.
Case number 2019-38. John Matthews of West Woxbury Development Corporation through his agent, Abigail Rose of Robert B. R. and Company, have applied for special permit for a temporary change in use in order to store materials and construction equipment associated with the town of Harwich sewer project. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, Section 325, 54, Table 1, Use Regulations, per paragraph Roman numeral 2, line 3, Essential Services, MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 160 Route 37, MAP 36, Partial M12-2, in the CH2 zoning district. We have two pieces of evidence, one of which is from the Board of Health, which deals with storage of material. And it will be read, I will not read the entire comment, other than it has to do with the disposal of hazardous waste and hazardous materials. It has to deal with petroleum-based coatings, and it has to deal with sodium chloride. Any of those areas or addition, or additional areas are prohibited by the town to be stored. So that, this entire document will be read into the, to the record and will be part of the, of the case, and the special permit will have to proceed according to those guidelines.
Do we have somebody from the applicant? Oh, Attorney Croll, you're not representing the applicant? You got up and moved there. Are you on 2019-38?
No, I'm not.
No, okay, thank you. We have no one here, then?
I haven't heard from anyone.
Okay, I'm going to move, or request a motion that we continue this case and to our January meeting at 7:00 PM.
January 29th.
What's the date?
January 29th.
January 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Second from Mr. Donahue, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this case will be continued.
The date again is?
Wait, yeah, you'll contact the applicant, please, and tell them they need to show up. Tell them we're not happy they're already storing materials and they need to get here and get a special permit. What's the date, continue?
29th.
39. Paul Bonfigliolo has applied for a special permit for a change of the use to allow for the sale of rental and service and repair services of new and used automobiles. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, 325, Table 1, Use Regulations Set Forth in MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 210 Queen Anne Road, MAP 38, Partial K3-11, in the zoning, in the IL zoning district. There are no comments from any members of the town.
All right, sir, if you could please identify yourself to the board and then present your petition.
Who's voting?
Oh, yes, who's voting? Okay, sorry. Let's see, we'll have Jim, Kathy, Dean, Al, and Chris. I'll not vote, and Mike will not vote on this application.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Paul Bonfiliou. I appreciate your time here tonight and going for a used car application at the, at the shop there. My intentions are kind of part-time. I want to, there's limited space, there's not going to be any, my, my thoughts were to have no, there's no viewing of any cars outside the building. I have to store the vehicles inside. There's probably room maybe for two small cars inside the building. No, you know, major repair, I really, my intentions are to just buy late, later model vehicles, almost have to buff and polish. I'm not a big wrench turner, so I, I'm not going to be tearing cars apart there, you know? No fuels or anything like that. I, I don't plan to store anything like that. I know, I, I know I can't, but I don't have any intentions to, anything I do mechanically will be mostly outside the property because I, again, don't have a lot of skills there. You know what I mean? So I have, I have, I have a mechanic that does my work, and he said he was willing to do the stuff on the side, and it wouldn't be a lot, maybe tires, brake pads, stuff like that. Like I said, I'm looking to do stuff from 2014, 15 upwards towards newer off-lease vehicles with, you know, lower miles, 30, 20, 30,000 miles, 40,000 miles, that type of thing, that don't need a lot of stuff because I don't have a lot of time. I'm in construction as well, and it's just something I, as that gets a little harder in my older age, it's something I'd like to do part-time, and, and I've always liked cars, and more, more so, I'm just trying to diversify and, and get some different multiple streams of income coming in, and I do some real estate here and there, but mostly it's just, it's something I enjoy, and I thought it would be, you know, nice to supplement the income, really. There's no frills, no spills, there's no, there's no, there's nothing that I can see that would do any, affect any other people in the area. I was just made aware that I need to confront my board over there to, as a change of use as well. There's a, there's a bunch of trustees over there that I have to reach out to, but, I mean, really, it's just, I'm going to be inside. I can't even start it quite yet. Let's say this went through, I have to do a lot of work to the prop, you know, inside the building, and just, there's not a lot of room there right now, and I'm currently starting to work on that, just to make room, and it's got to pass a safety inspection and all that, I'm sure, so. I just want to go through it, paint the building, the inside of the floor, and, and like I say, parking-wise, they're not allowed to have unregistered vehicles outside on this particular property, so that's why anything I do would have to be, it would be no more than two at a time, and, you know, that's not what, you know, I can't handle any more than that. So, and time-wise, too, being part-time, so. Thoughts on it? Sounded like a good idea. I, I do enjoy cars, like I say, I hope, I hope it goes through, so, that's my pitch, I guess.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for listening.
Mr. Hilliard.
Does this require a Class II license from the Selectmen? Have you?
Class II license?
Yes, these are pre-owned automobiles, used cars. There's Class I, I think, is for new cars, and Class II is for?
Oh, okay.
Used cars. Will you be applying to the Selectmen for a license, or?
For the used car license?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you haven't, but you will be if you get through?
I will be, yes, if I do that.
I have questions. I, I have no issues with your application.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yes. Mr. Bonfiliou, you said you were just made aware that you have to reach out to your board?
Yeah, then it's, we're, it's a group of 18 condos, and they're, we're all individually owned.
Oh, okay, it's a condo, okay.
Yeah, it's condos.
And, and two automobiles is as many as you expect to have?
At a time, yeah, I can't do anymore, and I, like I said, can't, I, it's going to be by appointment only.
Okay.
That type of thing.
And the property's still being used for auto repair? Is the property still being?
Oh, it's, I haven't been using my bay for that, no.
You haven't?
No, I'm actually, you know, it's, right now, it's kind of a warehouse just for construction equipment and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So up until this point, you've been handling motorcycles only?
No, that's Scott's auto. He's up, he's up front.
So now you're going to put, you're going to put, no, you don't have any cars outside? They will all be inside?
Correct, yeah.
And, and for sale, you'll advertise in local papers, et cetera?
Internet and stuff like that, yeah. People are going to need to call me and set an appointment.
Do you change oils and any of that kind of thing, or do you have oil receptacles, or you were, you can handle that?
I might change oil or something, but it wouldn't be anything really more than that, you know, and it, it would have to be obviously disposed of properly, but if it's a problem, I would certainly, I can have it done elsewhere, too, by, by us, you know.
That's my only concern. You're, you're, you're handling now motorcycle oil versus automobile oil storage is a problem.
I'm sorry, no, I don't handle, I don't work on motorcycles at all.
Oh, you don't, but you have motor, you, you, you're, I thought you're, we were granted you authority to you to, to sell them there.
No, that was Scott's auto. He's up front. I'm in, I'm in the back of the building. Scott's auto, I mean Scott's cycle is out front, yes.
Okay.
That's not me, no. He does, yeah, he does that out front. I, I'm out back.
Okay, but you can handle the storage of oils from automobiles?
I don't intend to, as far as, you know, I might change the oil if I do, you, like I say, it would be, I don't have the plans to, to do any kind of servicing like that.
Okay, you don't plan to service automobiles like that?
No, not for people, no. It'd be, you know, like I'll change my own oil there and my own cars and stuff, but I don't, I don't do that. I won't, I have no intentions to.
So you're not going to service vehicles, is that, is that what you're saying?
No, not at all, sir.
No service?
As far as for people, you mean, for customers type of thing, like, am I going to, somebody comes by and asks me for an oil change, would I do it for him? Is that what you're saying? Like, like a repair business? Is that what you're?
That's what I'm asking.
No, sir, no.
Okay, that's, that's all I need.
I'm not looking to be, you don't want me fixing your car.
No, I don't want you to be doing that. Thank you.
Okay, I think the use is appropriate, and we did grant that permit. You and I were on the board in 2019.
Right, I saw that, yep.
The neighbor. However, I do think if the board approves it, we should incorporate by reference this letter and make the statements in here conditions. So in other words, all vehicles stored inside the building, no more than two vehicles on the site at any one time, no storage of fuels or other flammable liquids. And I think we should also add the condition that the applicant secure and maintain all necessary licenses and permits to carry on the business, which, I mean, I don't think you're going to have any trouble with.
We don't have to say that. I assume he has to do it.
Sure, he does, but I think since you were given a special permit, we ought to put it as a condition. That's all I have. Mr. Donahue?
The only question I have, do you have a couple parking spaces in the back?
In the back, yeah.
Yeah, there's a trailer, I think, or something.
There is a trailer there, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And a boat, the boat's not.
If you have, an individual comes in as a, as a prospective buyer, are you going to trade the car right there?
Am I going, I'm sorry?
You're going to take a trade in there. Let's say you've got a car, and it's, it's interested, party is interested, where would you put that car, or how would the other motor vehicle leave the property?
Well, if I, if I am granted that, used car license, I would probably get a, you know, a repair plate. And I didn't really intend to take trades, to be honest with you, because of the limited situation, you know? If I did, I mean, I could probably, you know, transport it to my home and just get rid of it from there, you know? It wouldn't be, I don't see myself doing that, really, because it's just not really an option for me, you know? It's just going to be a specific thing with me, and, and it's not going to be your average place, you know, with, like I say, it's more of a part-time, and it has to work for me that way, or it's just, you know, I can't, I can't take vehicles in the trade, really. That's something I didn't think about, but I just didn't, assumed in my head, I am not taking trades.
Thank you.
You know, you're welcome.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, a follow-up. You mentioned you'd maybe changing oil. You also mentioned that you're referring to a guy that would be doing changing brakes?
In his shop, yeah.
In his shop?
Yeah.
Not in this location?
I mean, if, if, you know, it would be something so simple, yeah, I, I can even do brake pads, believe it or not, but, but I mean, it's not, it's, if it's, you know, I can't get into any kind of motor work, and I just am not capable. I'm, you know, my son needs a thermostat right now. I have to find it on the damn car first, you know what I mean?
But your friend won't be doing that either, though. I think you made a comment that you.
Storage and sale? That was my main intention, yeah, and it, like I said, very simple, simple stuff that, I mean, very simple stuff, but like I said, the cars I'm going for are going to be late, 20,000, 30,000, 40,000, you know, so, I mean, of course, they all need work, you know, but I intend to do anything, and if someone's going to do a tire or something, I'll tell them, please do the brake pads while you're there type, you know, it's a young fellow, he's aggressive, so, and he has a shop off-site, you know? And I don't intend to do, more so just wash and, and just show, really. I guess that's kind of my, was my original thought.
Mr. Capoli?
No questions.
No questions. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Yes, sir, if you could identify yourself, please.
Thank you. My name is Phil Giaranci, and I'm one of the new trustees at the Harwich Business Association. This is a makeup of 18 units condominiums of primarily workshops, tradesmen, and storage. We don't really have a lot of maintenance work in this area. We have very limited parking, as was said, and my biggest concern is what's going to happen when the insurance company finds out that we're now adding more vehicles and repair and sale in this area. I've lived in this community for 10 years, and all the neighbors along really well with each other, and I want to keep it that way, and I'm going to work very hard at this, so that's why I'm here tonight, just to make sure you do ask all the right questions. First and foremost, the gentleman, Mr. Bonfiliou, should run to the trustees first and foremost, not to come to this meeting, but to go to the trustees first. That's where he should have begun. We held a meeting on, in October, and all of the unit owners are encouraged to come. We notify them, and we, in time, we even call them personally to make sure that they come to that meeting. That would have been the meeting to explain the scope of what Mr. Bonfiliou is, is asking for. We have, I have, and if you, if I may approach, I would like to give you the deed, the master deed, that explains that the trustees have control over what goes in there first before you go for any other application or permit. May I approach?
Sure.
May I just?
Oh, wait, Mr. Hilliard.
Put in, but that's a civil issue between the trustees and one of the owners. I don't know that we want to involve ourselves in a civil issue. If he's not allowed to have this business there, that's not outside of our, I think outside of our jurisdiction. I mean, if he presents us with a master deed that says there should be no auto repair going on, I don't think that applies to us. I think that.
Well, I guess I would be loath to see the board grant a special permit if it's not allowed under the lease. I would rather continue the case and let them resolve it. That, that was my thought. No, I don't want to get involved between the two of them.
No, I'm, I just wanted to present that because I.
I certainly don't want to grant a permit, have the board grant a permit if it's not permitted until these two folks work out their differences.
I don't know about whether we, we should hold up a permit based upon an internal problem that doesn't involve us, and it's got to do with the owners or the leases of the property and the, and the person who wants to, to do the business there. That's their problem, not ours. Our problem is, does it meet the criteria set forth in the, in the, in the zoning bylaws? And if it does, then I think we're, we don't have anything to do with these, with this going on.
May I ask the gentleman a question?
Sure.
Does the master deed prohibit the type of use that Mr. Bonfiliou is proposing?
No, it does not.
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes, it does.
Okay, sorry, we're getting correction.
Be careful. We're getting involved again. I don't want to interpret your master deed. I'm just, if.
No retail sales, bicycle repair, and auto repair for a total of not more than four units.
No. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was. If they can't figure it out, what the hell are we going to do?
I'll read it. Although the condominium is located in an industrial zone of the town of Harwich, the board hereby reserves the right, the board of trustees, to approve any and all uses by any unit, any unit owner, which said uses shall include garage storage, general office use, general construction operations, assembly operations, wholesale distribution, no retail sales, bicycle repair, and auto repair for a total of not more than four units.
That doesn't necessarily prohibit it, that just makes it contingent on the board, the trustees approving it.
Can you guys override such a thing?
No, no, we, that's not our jurisdiction to interpret it.
That's basically the question, that you can't just supersede what bylaws are written and recorded indeed. But it really means that.
Two different, there's two different streams of approval.
Yeah, we have the ability to grant a special permit allowing it under the zoning law. Whether it's allowed contractually, that's not our issue, that's between the applicant and the trustees, and we aren't, as Mr. Hederstedt said, we're not getting involved with that, and Mr. Hilliard also. I did want the board to hear that, though, so we could, you know, consider it. It's a, it's a valid comment. Do you have anything else, sir, to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? No, okay, Mr. Bonfiliou, would you like to say anything further?
No, no, apparently, like you say, apparently, Jim, like I said, made me aware tonight that we have to get together with the board, so, and I was supposed to make a meeting, I couldn't make the last one, that's not your problem, but, but no, I have no, I will definitely get with these fellows and, and talk to them and see what's going on, but as far as for you folks, no.
Okay, thank you. There were no further comments from the public? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed. Discussion by the board. We'll start with Mr. Hilliard.
My concern is not for us to get involved in a civil issue between?
Correct.
Folks, because it, I, I think you probably should have gone before the trustees initially, although it's not a procedural issue with us, but should have, so we didn't have this cloud that's cast.
Exactly, I feel, yeah, kind of horrible right now.
For myself, I don't see a reason personally, it's not a reason to deny your application or to allow it, I don't think this has anything to do with our denial or an allowance of it. I think you've met the criteria. I've heard nothing that this causes a substantial detriment to the area or the neighborhood, so, under the special permitting request and under the statute, I think you've met your, met the criteria of it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Muller?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Bonfiliou whether he wants us to proceed tonight, or whether he'd like a continuance without prejudice until he gets this other issue sorted out.
Well, I mean, I guess we could proceed, I'm, not to, to get anyone upset, I, I guess we could proceed, and I'll, can there or not is, is another story for sure, but, and I will, like I say, address that. I, I was made aware, like I said, tonight by Jim, he says you got to bring it here first, so now I, you know, but yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we can go forward with it, whether it actually can happen over there, given the, the board, you know, well, that's another story, like you say, so.
Mr. Hederstedt?
With the incorporation of his letter dated October 28, 2019, read it, and as part of this information he submitted with the case, I have no problem of issuing a special permit, and that it meets the, all the applicable requirements of the Gale case, and, and therefore should be approved as a special permit.
Okay, the Gale case really isn't applicable to this situation, but I think it does meet the requirements of the bylaw, I'm not going to vote on it. I am ambivalent whether the board grants the permit or continues the case, I just did want to raise that as a possibility. If we're going to go forward with this case, it would appear, as Mr. Hilliard brought it up, with regard to the licensing aspect through the board of Selectmen, I'd like to see that put as a condition relative to this case.
The idea was that letter, that what that letter is, is going to be put in, correct?
I don't know whether or not, in, in some cities and towns, before a license can be issued, you have to show that you've met all the other regulatory and statutory requirements, so, I, making it a condition, I think, is, absolutely needs to be done, I just don't know whether, I don't know that you could have gone to the Selectmen without having
I thought she told me that, too.
No further questions? Okay, thanks, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Murphy?
That letter will be included, which had the conditions and all that, as the previous case, right? That's my only.
I'm, I'm sorry?
There was a letter that you mentioned, no, no human story.
I got the letter.
I think we should incorporate that if the board is going to grant the permit.
That, that does give it restrictions, which is what, what we're looking for.
Right, as conditions, yeah.
If that's included, I have no problems with this.
Mr. Capoli? All right, in that case, I will entertain a motion on the case.
Okay.
Wait, we got to enter, a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Did that already?
Did I do that already? Okay, good, motion on the case, then.
Okay, the zoning board of, of Appeals hereby approves under case 2019-39, providing Paul Bonfiliou a special permit for a change of use to allow for the, for the sale or rental and repair services of new or used automobiles. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 1, Use Regulations Set Forth in MGL 48, Section 26. The property is located on, at 210 Queen Anne Road, MAP 30, MAP 58, or 658, Partial K3-11, in the IL zoning district.
Unit 12.
Unit 12, I'm sorry. This approval is based upon the applicant's submittal of documents for the planned work that he has, a change in the use which he has requested, and it is, and it is provided that the applicant perform and do the work as, as set forth in his letter dated 28 October 2019, which is read into the case.
As conditions.
And as an addition, as a condition of his approval. It also, it is also understood, although we're not, we won't be required to, to review it, but it's also understood that he will have to get the, the approvals of the various town departments and licenses for, to conduct this type of business.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Hilliard, any further discussion?
Oh, none.
All in favor by the five voting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special permit's granted.
Thank you very much, folks.
I'm going to stamp these here.
Got everything?
Yeah, I got the ones I want to stamp.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want that one. Stamp this one.
I don't need that, no, but I do want the same letter.
And I stamped the letter, yes.
Very much.
So, let's see. Hey, Mr. Hedersted, we can call the case, I guess, there.
All right. The next case is 2019-40, James and Lauren Lipscomb, through their agent, attorney William-
That's it. Got it right, Mr. Hedersted, thank you.
Christmas present.
Nailed it. Christmas present.
How was that, huh?
Great.
That's beautiful, anyway. Agent William Crowell have applied for a special permit, or in the alternative of variance, to replace and expand the wooden deck on an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 32554, Table 2, and Table 2, Area Regulation Set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6, and if necessary, because of the variance requirement, if so, granted, Chapter 48, Section 10. The property is located at 47 Harbor Road, map 15, partial U36-1, in the R1 zoning district. We have, we have two letters which will be put into the record, one is from the Board of Health, which with no issues, and the same from the Conservation Commission.
Okay, voting on the case, we'll have Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli. Mr. Murphy and I will not be voting. Attorney Crowell, if you could please introduce yourself for the record, and who's with you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Court, and I have seated with me James Lipscomb, and his wife Lauren, own the property at 47 Harbor Road in Howard's Court. I've been meaning to mention, Mr. Chairman, that I did read your article that was in the newspaper, on the anniversary of the Woodstock-
The other Woodstock.
The other Woodstock, I thought it was a very interesting counter perspective of being over in Vietnam at that time, and-
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, it didn't sound like it was fun, that's for sure, but it was, it was a good point, counterpoint. In any event, this property is located off of Harbor Road, on your way down to Whichmere Harbor, south of 28, it's shown on the assessor's map that I submitted with the petition, and the petitioners are seeking to demolish the existing wooden deck, as shown on the plan, and replace it with a larger deck, they're not proposing to do any work on the dwellings at this time, it's just the deck. You have a copy of the plot plan, it's somewhat reduced, I have a larger copy, but the existing deck is 11.8 feet from the, that corner, that closest corner, and the proposed deck, to make everything work outright spatially, needs to be 9.9 feet from the lot line, as opposed to 11.8, so, not a big increase. The required setback from that southerly lot line is 20 feet, as you know, so it's a pre-existing nonconformity. We have the denial letter from the Building Department that says that we do not meet the setback requirements, but as you know, under the findings of the Gale case, we have a pre-existing nonconformity, we can intensify it if you find that the intensification will not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and it would submit that coming a couple of feet closer to that lot line would not be a substantial detriment to the property values in that neighborhood, or anything of that nature, and would not create any substantial increase in traffic, noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like. It's my understanding that my client has talked with the neighbor, the most immediate neighbor to the south and southwest there, and that the neighbor hasn't, does not have an issue with this slight expansion of the wooden deck, so we had asked that you grant the special permit this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Hilliard?
This is not covered, you're just extending, taking up your old deck, putting a new deck, increasing it by 1.9 percent, I mean, a foot, nine inches, that's it?
In depth, and there's going down the length of the house, but encroaching on the, the lot line, no?
Okay, and it's, but it's not covered?
Not covered.
No, outside deck. I have no, no questions, no concern, I think it meets all the criteria we need to see.
Ms. Muller?
I have no questions.
Mr. Hedersted?
I have no questions, I also agree that it meets the Gale case, and there's no-
Just trying to keep my presentation shorter than last time, per Mr. Hilliard's request.
Thank you. I have no questions.
I have no questions either.
Donahue? Mr. Murphy?
I have no questions, just happy to see you had two by, six by sixes up there, and not four by fours over in the deck. That was pretty rickety.
Yeah, I guess the only comment I have, I'm going to come back and make a comment, I don't think we need a construction restriction, because this property sits from the road, and plenty of area there along the drive and whatnot, at the end of the drive by the house looks like a big area where you can put vehicles during the construction. Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? No one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Somebody said second, who is it, Mr. Capoli, okay, public, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed, I will entertain a motion in-
Dave, I have one question.
Oh, question?
Regarding the back of the house, the two, two garage doors, the proximity of the support makes me question how you'd ever get a car in and out of that, if it ever became-
So, just, I, um, sure. Yeah, no, no, it's a good question. We don't really plan to use the garage as much, we'll probably put in, you know, opties or something like that in the, in the wintertime, for, put a boat in there, and then the other garage bay, it's bicycles, we park outside primarily.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? Any discussion by the Board? Before we go to a motion?
No.
Entertain a motion in the case?
Sir, the Howard Appeals on Case 2019-40 hereby grants James and Lauren Lipscomb a special permit to replace and extend a wooden deck on an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 32554, Table 2, Area Regulation Set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 47 Harbor Road, map 15, partial U36-1, in the R1 zoning district.
RL.
RL, sorry about that, RL.
Okay.
This approval has based upon the applicant's submitted documents for the planned alteration or reconstruction or expansion of the wooden deck, and on a, on this single-family residential structure, and meets, and meets the Gale case in that there's no new nonconformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, Mr. Capoli, any discussion by the Board on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of plans here, but you know what, as long as they're submitted, huh? Just stamp them all. Yeah, there's a set of plans. All right, thanks, Chairman. Oops, sorry. Okay, Mr. Hedersted, if you're ready?
I'm ready. Case 2019-41, Brian Dolan, trustee of the, Brian Dolan Revocable Trust, and Elizabeth Dolan, trustee, trustee of the Elizabeth Dolan Revocable Trust, through their agent, attorney William Crowell, have applied for a special permit, or in the alternate of variance, to enclose an existing porch and construct decks on a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 32554, Table 2, Area Regulation Set forth in MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6, and if necessary, vervariance, Chapter 48, Section 10. The property is located at 3 Lincoln Ave, map 6G3-1, in the RH1 district. There are two letters from the Boards, one is a letter from the Board of, from the Board of Health, with no special concerns, the other one is from the Conservation Commission, which indicates that it will have to file an application through the Conservation Commission in order for this work to continue, inasmuch as it, it does impact the 50-foot district, 50-foot, no build district, and so therefore those, that, those two letters are read into the, read as part of the file.
Thank you. Attorney Crowell, if you could introduce yourself for the record, and who is with you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Court, and I'm here representing the two trusts that Mr. Hedersted read in, the Brian Dolan Trust and the Elizabeth Dolan Trust. The Dolans traveling, could not make it this evening, and I have with me Kathy De Meyer from Encore Construction, which will be doing the work, you may recognize Kathy from, if you watch the Patriots games, and they have TV ads for Encore, she's in the ad. So, in any event, this property is south of Lower County, near Hiawatha Road and Northern Avenue, and Lincoln Avenue extends down to Antucket Sound. Not major renovations, this house was built, but what they propose to do, as shown on the Moran Proposed Conditions Plot Plan, the gray dotted in area shows the existing porch, that has an arrow to it saying that existing porch is the one that's to be enclosed, and then towards the south, you see there's an existing patio, sort of tongue-shaped, and they're going to square that off, and put a ground-level deck, and then a second-level deck above that, not really an enclosed porch, on top of a deck. It will not extend any further than the existing patio. Yes, we know about the Conservation Commission, we wanted to come here first, this came up at a prior petition, each Board seems to want, in the town, seems to want to know all the other Boards first, but you've got to go somewhere first, so, we're here, we're here with you on this one, but we do know that we have to satisfy the Conservation Commission, et cetera, may have to give up some lawn space. So, in any event, the existing dwelling is, as shown on the plan, 14.4 feet from the westerly lot line, which is the line of Lincoln Avenue, so you're supposed to be 25 feet back from the road, so we're pre-existing, nonconforming. The porch that's going to be enclosed is not going to come any closer than 14.4, as shown on the plan, the new deck upon deck will be 19.3 feet, as shown on the plan, from Lincoln Avenue, but as you know, under our bylaw, you can extend along the same line without encroaching that line, and it meets the criteria for a special permit under our bylaw, it also meets the criteria of the Gale case, in my opinion, because what we're doing is intensifying an existing nonconformity by creating a deck where a, a ground-level patio exists, so we're creating a structure, but we are intensifying an existing nonconformity, and then when we are enclosing the porch and in creating habitable space, now we're creating more habitable space within the 25-foot setback from Northern Avenue. But our argument is, under the Gale case, that, and under the bylaw, that, that the intensification- -odors, congestion, or the like, and we ask that you grant the special permit as a result this evening, thank you.
Okay, we'll have voting on the case, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Capoli and I will not be voting. Mr. Hilliard?
Mr. Crowell, can you explain, if this is a new house, you said?
Relatively new.
Okay, how does it then qualify for a pre-existing, nonconforming structure?
Then, maybe I shouldn't have made that comment, it's not a brand-new house, it may have been newly renovated.
Because it's, it currently, it's 14 feet from the line where it requires 25.
That's a good question, I, I, I didn't mean to imply that we built a new house closer than 25 feet from the lot, somehow got away with it.
I didn't, I'm just asking, because there could be a lot of good reasons for it, all valid, I just want to hear them.
Okay, the assessors' records say that the house was built in 1995.
Right.
That's what I meant by relatively new, I still think of 1995 as relatively new, even 85 seems relatively new.
Brand-new. So, in 1995, the house was built, and at that time, was there, has subsequent change in the zoning bylaw from the side?
One would surmise, yes.
Oh.
That they built the, the house with a valid building permit at that time.
One, yeah, okay, so, I guess my question is, if there was a zoning change post-building, then it would be a pre-existing, nonconforming structure? If the zoning at the time was 25 feet, which it still is, I'm just trying to find out how it becomes pre-existing if it was built while 25 feet was in existence, was there a zoning change that brought it into the nonconforming?
It was built while 25 feet was required, then it was nonconforming when it was built?
No, would have to have received a variance, if at the time it was built, it was 14 feet from the side, with a 25-foot requirement, it would have to have received a variance to have that, unless there was a structure there before.
That's what I'm thinking, I wasn't involved with the, with the property, but-
There was a structure there before.
So, I think it was a renovation, Ms. De Meyer is saying there was a structure there before, so, the assessors' records, I've learned over time, with all due respect, you can't rely on them completely, because they may be just upgrading their records from when the renovation took place. But down in that area, on the beach, there were houses there for a long time.
Yeah, so-
That would predate our zoning.
So, you're representing that the foundation, at least, that was there prior to the zoning change, was the same foundation that they built the house on?
Oh, I don't know that.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to get to the basis of how this is a pre-existing, nonconforming-
I know they rebuilt the house in 1995, but I don't know the exact, we didn't build-
Do you know, was there a house there before?
There was.
Ah. Because when I'm in the building, inspector issued you a permit for the 14, well, did not for the 14 feet, but issued a building permit- for the 14 feet, but issued a building permit despite the fact that it was at 14 feet from the side, which would indicate, if there was one issue, that it was a legitimate build. There's no record that it came before this board.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Muller.
I have no questions.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have, I guess, the only concern I have is, in summary, the existing porch, which is around the brick patio, to be enclosed, that's not an issue. I mean, that's pretty clear. The existing patio, which was semicircular, and now you're going to a proposed square, I guess you are, from a setback standpoint, you are absolutely correct, and so I can't argue that either. So, in my estimation, it, in these two cases or these two changes he wishes to make, meet the Gale case, and that there is no new nonconformity proposed in his application, and therefore, a variance is not required, but a special permit is.
Yes, I agree, Mr. Hedersted. I think we do need the construction restriction.
I do for that.
It's pretty tight down there.
Yep.
Mr. Donahue.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Murphy.
No further questions.
Mr. Capoli.
Nothing further.
Is there anyone in the public would like to address this application?
Yes.
Yes, sir. If you could approach the podium, the microphone, and identify, please.
Richard Santos. I'm a neighbor on the water, a couple houses to the east. So, I apologize, because I should have seen the drawings first.
Give me a little more volume there, sir, please. I'm hearing challenged up here.
I apologize. I should have looked at the drawings before I asked the questions. So, what I'm hearing is there's a deck on a deck. Is that correct? A deck over the deck? Is one a balcony?
Well, I'm going to respond.
It's going to be, where the patio is right now, there's going to be a deck constructed there, and then there's going to be uprights that are going to support a deck on the second floor level. So, a deck on top of a deck.
Open decks.
Mm-hmm.
So, one of them's going to be about...
Have you seen the plans?
No.
Come up to the table.
Let me ask one other question. So, the extension, you were talking about the setback from Lincoln. What about the extension of the property going towards the water? Is this going across the whole front, bringing the deck and the deck over, the deck closer?
Why don't you come up to the table, and they can show you the plan. I think it will be easier to see what they're proposing.
So, this is the current patio.
So, where is Lincoln?
Lincoln's up here.
Lincoln is there, okay. So, you're not going any closer to Lincoln.
No.
You're coming closer to the water.
No, not really.
So, the setback from Lincoln is not what we're talking about, right?
Well, no, we're not coming any further anyways, because the existing patio is this far.
But you are coming.
No.
You're not coming there. This is the house.
Yeah, this is the existing patio.
Okay.
So, there's a jog in the house right here.
I see.
The deck is going to be in about two feet from there, where the existing patio is. So, no, it's not going to come any further this way.
So, it's attached, it's an attachment to the house?
Correct.
So, there'd be an entrance to the upper deck from the house?
Correct. There won't be an outside stairway or anything. It'll just be from the house, so.
Okay, you say this is 18 and a half by 13 and a half. What's this dimension?
This would be 13 and a half.
13 and a half.
Correct.
It's right there.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see on here, but...
So, I'm really not affected, but you are affecting, and I guess the view is not an issue, really.
Well, we're not affecting anybody's view.
Well, you'd be affecting the view coming across and coming this way to the water.
Mm-hmm. I don't know, I think the house itself would...
But I don't think anybody's...
No, he's talked to all the neighbors here.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, did that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second? Okay, second, Mr. Hedersted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion in the case of Howard Zoning Board of Appeals under case 2019-41. Grant, Brian Dolan, trustee of the Dolan Revocable Trust and Elizabeth Dolan, trustee of the Elizabeth Dolan Revocable Trust, a special permit to enclose an existing porch and construct decks on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, 32554, and Table 2. Area regulations set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 3-1, in the RH1 zoning district. This special permit is based upon the applicant-submitted documents for the planned work on a non-conforming, single-family residential structure, and in so doing, it is in accordance with the Gale case in that there is no new conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood, with one proviso, and the proviso is, because the property is located in such a close residential location, there can be no substantial demolition, external construction, or substantial landscaping in any year prior, during the period 30 June through Labor Day. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second for Mr. Donahue. Any discussion on the motion by the board? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would you like your time?
Please. Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much.
Case 2019-42. David Joseph, through his agent, Michael Takoff, of Earl and Stone LLC, has applied a special permit to replace an existing retaining wall within the setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Towne of Howard, Section 325, Table 2. Area regulations set forth in MGL 48, Section 6. The property is located at 67 Idle Way, MAP 63, Partial A, 137, in the RH zoning district. There is one letter of, from the conservation, not from the conservation, I'm sorry, from the Board of Health, with no problems.
Okay, we will have voting on the case. Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Capoli. Mr. Murphy and I will not be voting. If you could identify yourselves, sir, and then present your application, please.
Good evening. Michael Takoff from Earl and Stone LLC, Harwich. Here representing Mr. and Mrs. David Joseph of 67 Idle Way in Harwich. The current owners of 67 Idle Way have asked us to assist them in replacing an existing retaining wall along their driveway in the northwest portion of their property that is currently failing. They've owned the home for a couple years, from what I understand, and over that period of time, the wall has continued to fall over further and further, thinking that this year will be the final year of its staying put without assistance. The wall currently extends from the northeast corner of the home in a northwesterly direction to the front property line. Our proposal is to dismantle the wall that is there, replace it in the same footprint and layout, using a natural stone material in place of the man-made blocks that are there now. Don't think it's going to cause any substantial detriment to the neighborhood by any means. We also have a letter from the most immediate abutting neighbor, who has the most visibility to the wall in question. Pass a copy of that around shortly. The letter states they have no complaints or problems about that, and I don't think there's any other issues with the proposal, other than if we left the wall there, I think it will fall down, at which point it may be a detriment to the neighborhood.
One question, just before I turn it over to Mr. Hilliard. On your plan, there are little curves there on the existing wall? Are those drainage tubes?
No, sir. The grade drops by roughly five feet from the corner of the house to where the wall intersects the front property line. So, it's, the property is sloping from the house to the street, and as that grade drops, the prior construction expert of the wall there curved the courses back as the wall dropped in height. So, if you look at it, you know, where it starts, where the first piece starts to curve back, that's, say, the first foot of the wall curves back, then the next piece is lower, and that curves back, and then the last piece curves back to accommodate the grade dropping in that area of the property.
I note that the one curve closest to Idle Way appears to be over the property line.
Yeah, we would like to just shorten the length of the wall by whatever amount necessary to keep it within the property.
Yeah, we would want to see it in the property line. Mr. Hilliard.
This is what I look at, is a distinction without a difference. It's the exact length, same length, same height that exists currently?
We are also proposing to lower the overall height by as much as possible, just to retain the grade that's there. There's been a lot of settling, so the old wall was built, let's say, about five feet tall, but because the wall is falling over, the earth behind it is now much lower, so we would propose to only build the wall to the height necessary to retain the grade that's there now.
I have no questions. I think certainly it meets the criteria for us on our decision.
And as far as the same footprint, in fact, it will be shortened to fall within the property line.
Correct.
Okay, no questions.
Mr. Hedersted.
What was the purpose of the retaining wall?
So, the home is sighted such that the front, the portion facing Idle Way, which I would call the first story, is at grade in that location, but the northeast side and a portion of the southeast side of the house is at a lower basement level that's a walkout.
Ah, okay.
So, the driveway that's indicated on the plan to the east of the wall services the walkout level of the home. So, that wall is there to create a level spot for that driveway to get in, to access the house.
Okay. You're going to put a base in, I assume?
The new proposed wall will have a poured concrete footing.
Ah, that's what I thought, okay. And, yeah, it'll be wider than the rest of the, in order for it to stabilize it, it's going to be wider.
Yeah, it'll be what's...
But it'll be hidden, you'll never see it.
Correct, yeah, it'll be what's known as a turnover footing, where it extends back into the grade much...
I don't even know, I don't even want to know where you're getting the stone.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with this, just with the one comment that you make sure you get it inside the property line. Mr. Donahue.
I had the same comment. I didn't care of that, so no further comments.
Mr. Murphy. Mr. Capoli.
No further comments.
All right, no one is left in the public, so I'll move to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hilliard. Public hearing closed. I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Sir, case 2019-42, the final case for 2019, hereby provides David Joseph a special permit to replace existing retaining wall within the setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, 325, Table 2. Area regulations set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 67 Idle Way, MAP 63, Partial 137, in the RH zoning district. This special permit is based upon, and is based upon the applicant... And as such, that effort is in accordance with the Gale case in that there is no new conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. The only one comment we have is that in the, the application is to ensure that in the north side of the retaining wall, that it does not encroach on the property line known as N57-Foot-52-40E.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Donahue, any discussion by the board on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome.
Our pleasure.
If you don't need them, I'll take them.
Sure, we'll take some plans to...
Thanks, Shannon.
...ask them. You want them to go ask them?
No.
Yes, sir?
Okay. Good night.
Good evening.
Okay, continuing on, I received a phone call tonight from Mr. Hedersted. You want to explain?
Surely, I have decided to hang up my ZB A hat. I have participated with this board for more than a decade, and I truthfully feel that we have organized ourselves, where we have recruited some outstanding clients and outstanding personnel that would fulfill the board's needs for permanent members. And therefore, I feel that I have really overdone my stay, and I'd like to give those people an opportunity to participate as permanent board members. So, on that basis, as of tomorrow, I will no longer be part of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I really do appreciate everybody. They have, you have all been more than wonderful to me, and laugh when I laugh, and sometimes pick on me when I need to be picked on, but otherwise, I enjoyed it very, very much. So, thank you all very much. On behalf, on behalf of myself and the...
On behalf of myself and the entire board, I want to thank Dean for his conscientious and loyal service. Yeah, I was just a boy when I joined. He was already on 10, 15 years. But yes, Dean has been at it for much longer than I have, and we thank you. You've been very faithful to the meetings, and I think you've added a lot, and you, it's a shame you've got to leave now, though, when you've just learned how to pronounce Attorney Kroll's name. The timing is impeccable.
Specifically, as you could probably tell.
I thought about bringing it up in the meeting, but I didn't really think that was appropriate.
Mr. Hederstedt, you will need to write a letter to the Board of Selectmen to do that.
Yeah, and to the town clerk.
Town clerk, yes.
I will, I will, that will be taken care of in the morning.
Excellent.
Yeah, so thank you, Dean. It's been a pleasure.
I'm going to give you this because this is, this is still hanging around.
Earl Terrace?
Mm-hmm. Is it not?
I think I still have it, yeah.
Earl? I don't know.
Not the one from last?
I think I've got it. Isn't that the one?
Twenty nineteen thirty-three. Yeah.
That's the one they, they're building a front patio, front, a front sunroom or something?
We approved that one.
We still got Bayberry? Yeah, that was approved.
I don't know. All right, but I will take them and-
Isn't that the one down at the, uh? I think it is.
You know, they, we come, I come to the meeting, and we do the cases, and they go out of my head. I don't remember.
I'll see you, I'll see you at the golf shop. How's that?
Okay. Next month, we'll have to elect a new clerk.
Okay, so let me, while you're talking next month, we may not have time to do that. We have, we haven't hit the deadline for submission for next month, but as you know, the applicants have to put in an application for a building permit to get denied from the commissioner, and he has eight of those sitting in his box for the January 2nd deadline. So there'll be that, plus the continued one from tonight.
Oh, great, and it will snow.
Plus the continued from Snowing Road.
The, and didn't we continue the?
Yeah, the Whichmer Harbor-
Oh, what do we call it now, the Whichmer Harbor Club?
Yep.
Okay, that could be in there, yeah.
And that's what it is.
January twenty-ninth. January 2nd is the deadline.
That gives them enough time to, to publish everything?
Yep.
Okay, well.
Ouch.
Toothbrushes.
Well, we, you know, it's only a little bit after eight, and we did five tonight, so it depends on the nature of the cases, obviously.
Should we, to be ready for the next meeting, should we, while Dean's still a member, can he step down as secretary, and then?
Do that tonight?
Okay with me. But we, we'd only have our four regulars voting, so.
Not me.
No. So I'm open for nominations. The floor is open for nominations.
You're way up the chairmanship.
And/or volunteers.
You should be an attorney, Jim.
We have plenty of those on the board. Don't we? So that'd be one of the-
All right, Mr. Hilliard raised his hands. We'll nominate Mr. Hilliard, since he volunteered. Second, all in favor?
I'm going to be here all day.
Mr. Hilliard is re-crowned as clerk after a brief-
It's like watching Tom Brady with the no huddle.
Made it so much easier, because he's, he wrote out this proposal and-
Yeah, I think that's helpful.
It is.
I, you know, I, because Dean does most of the motions. I'd like to see other members do them. We've got the format now.
It should be.
And I really think we should have a little more motion participation, if we can. I mean, I could make them, but I don't want to make them. I think it should come from the chair. The minutes from our last meeting, did anyone have any comments? No comments? So take a motion to approve the minutes? Second?
Second.
Second? Mr. Murphy, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Okay, you saw, I, after the last protracted discussion on uplands and whatnot, I, I, we talked at the end of the meeting about getting an opinion of counsel, it's sort of after the fact, but this issue will come up again.
Oh, you're going to interpret it for us.
So it's, it's, I, I believe-
I was waiting for that.
I had the same issue.
The Conservation Commission has to let us know if they have jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act. Okay, and then we decide whether or not it qualifies, that the piece of property qualifies as a lot. If it's subject to the Wetlands Protection Act, we have to grant a variance to the uplands requirement, is the way I read this.
Yeah, maybe too, sort of.
Comes out.
I, are we still on?
We're still on, yeah.
Well, I had, I, I think it's a, I think it's a well-drafted opinion, but it's, it's confusing.
Yes.
I would have, I would have liked to have had it in more layperson's language.
A little more straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah, more straightforward.
Right.
But it's, you know, I, I get it, making references to the, to the bylaw and FEMA and so on and so forth.
Right, now, under my reading of lot, which I had mentioned last time, it's really only going to be where somebody is laying out a new lot. Not all the stuff that comes in front of it. These have all been laid out. That one, I thought, was a new lot, because they were creating two lots after the fact, so I think that's where this came in. I didn't think we had the authority to grant a variance, but we do, she said. I also, I didn't think it was, met the hardship standard, whether we did or we didn't.
Oh, you don't.
But it looks like we still, whether, we can determine whether it's uplands or not based upon what the Conservation Commission says, but-
Conservation Commission approved it, so we don't have any-
Well, we still have to, we'd still have to grant a variance.
Yeah. It has to, has to meet the variance, a totally separate issue.
It has to meet the requirements-
That's right.
For a variance.
I wish it did. That's something I want to read. Can I see that for just a minute?
The very, very last comment, the last paragraph-
The variance.
You guys did.
And I'm just trying to find out what it, it sounded like what it was.
Could grant a variance?
Yeah, but it had to do with money, and it, and it used the term-
Financial hardship.
Yes.
Financial, it said financial.
Financial or otherwise.
Or otherwise.
Right.
Financial hardship or otherwise. I think that's key. That's the first time I remember seeing that statement anywhere.
No, that's in the statute.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, and that really strikes home.
Well, my otherwise, and the reason I didn't think they met the requirement last time of hardship, was they've already got two uses on those two lots. To me, the or otherwise would be when you have a piece of property that cannot be used without the variance. And we have had those cases come before us, where there was nothing they could do with the property. It was a dead piece of property unless we gave them a variance. And to me, that absolutely meant the or otherwise, even if it wasn't a significant financial hardship. And I don't, I don't know if it was, I don't remember if it was, what the financial thing was.
Was there one with the retaining wall?
Well, that one I wasn't involved with, actually. I was absent tonight. You folks wrestle with that one. But yeah, I know that was, that was one of the concerns, but I think it was before you were on the board, Kath. Dean and I were on, and it was down off of the Neal Road area, down there. And I, I don't remember the specifics now, but the lot was going to be unusable unless the board granted a variance.
We, we went through that, and we made that case very hard and very fast.
Right.
It was going to be unusable, and that unusable, and that's not the town's desire, and they wouldn't set up lots on that basis. They couldn't, they wouldn't do it.
Right. But anyway, I thought it was a good opinion. Yes, it was, took me a couple of readings to parse through it. It's not-
I thought it was very good. It was a little bit lengthy, but it was very good.
Well, I had asked a bunch of different questions, and I tried to do the questions, and, you know, so she could logically tell us, but it-
She's a lawyer.
Yeah, it was a little more lawyerly than I would like. But she's a lawyer, so that's what we asked for, an opinion of counsel. And the other thing is, of course, she says right at the beginning, and it was in one of the letters we got tonight from the Conservation Commission, whatever we decide, the Conservation Commission still has the final decision on the wetlands issue. Like this coastal bank. We can give the permit, but they can stop the construction and do whatever.
The very last line of this, it said that the board has the statutory authority to waive the strict application of lot, blah, 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 as long as it doesn't abridge the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission under the Harwich Wetland Bylaw or the Wet, or the Wetland Protection Act. So, you know, I thought that was the, the way it sort of condensed.
Conservation Commission has the hand.
Right.
I, I feel strongly about any of these municipal requirements that, in order to have the authority to approve, you have to have the authority to say no and deny. I don't think, I mean, I, that's why I think I was trying to get at the last, at the last meeting. We were talking about, well, this is, could possibly stop us. We're talking about wetlands, uplands, and decision. And if it's our decision to say no, then we obviously must have the right to say yes. We don't have any rights over wetland lands, any rights to say, because that's what they issue an order of conditions for from the Conservation Commission and limit the use, and if not the use, at least the construction.
That's what they're there for.
That's what they're there for. That still isn't clear to me.
Well, what was confusing me, and I still, I, I read what she says, to me, the definite, well, it doesn't, it appears to me, she says, we can grant a variance from the requirements for uplands.
I don't think she says that.
No, you don't think that's what she's saying?
That's just what she says. As long as you don't abridge the rights of the Conservation Commission to determine-
Right, but that's why I don't think she says that. If we, if we start, if we make a decision that regarding wetlands, then the question is, why isn't it Conservation's responsibility to make that decision? How do we get authority? We can do it if we meet the statute, the statutory requirements. If they don't meet it, then we say no. If they meet it, then we decide that we're going to say yes. I have an issue with the fact that if we say no because it's wetlands, or we say no because it's, it's a conservation, then the question, why isn't Conservation involved in that? Why?
But see, they do get involved, so that's one of the things I was going to say.
That's exactly right.
Just like Attorney Kroll said, all of the boards have different layers and have to approve. Somebody starts. So the board granted a special permit. That special permit is going to inspire a building permit, which will then come to the, the community development team, and will need to get through all of the different departments. It's going to go first to Conservation. If they don't approve of that building permit, it doesn't go forward. But at least they have the beginning-
It looks like the Board of Health on the Conservation Commission is taking the bull by the horns here. And as I've noted at the last couple of meetings, they are coming in on every case, in the most every case. They're, they're making a comment, one way or the other. So they are, in fact, that's a great thing to have happen.
That's because we, I ask for that.
The board asks.
I ask for that. I put out a memo that says if there's anything for anybody to say. I send it to the fire department, and the police department, and the highway and maintenance. I don't get anything back, because they don't have anything to say.
If we, if we were to make a decision, in the decision, we, we put that we're granting this special permit, or we're granting this variance because we are setting aside the wetland issue, then that means we're taking jurisdiction over the wetland issue. And if we do that, Conservation steps in and says, wait a minute.
Can they override us?
Yeah.
But it says they're right in here.
That's my point. If we have the authority to say yes, we have to have the authority.
Me, the only, the only way we can live with it is if we see this as an issue before the meeting.
Yes.
Conservation has to give us an upland determination. They did not do that in that case.
Right.
That was the problem. They did not tell us, is there, are there enough uplands for the operation? That was their problem to solve.
But see, the-
So when it came to us-
We did not get a letter from-
I figured they didn't.
We did, it said that they approved the rebuilding.
It's in our definition, in the bylaws, we can address it.
They had gone to them, and they had no problem with it.
They did not say-
They addressed it, because it said, they said there was no problem.
Right, they said there was no problem with it.
Because it was, they had read, they had read the, the case that came down. They had read all of that, and they said it's not an issue.
They said there was no issue with segmenting it the way it was requested?
No, they didn't say anything about the specifics. They just said Conservation has looked at this and has approved the rebuilding of the building at 15 Don Road, and did not see a problem with it. And this opinion says, the very last thing again, says the board has the right to vary the strict requirements of that definition of a lot so long as it does not abridge the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission is going to jump in and take their own jurisdiction and make their own discussion, separate from what the Board of Appeals does. So the Board of Appeals can offer a variance, as they did, and still, the Conservation Commission can say, we don't approve it because it doesn't meet our requirements.
But as Dave said, it would be useful, I think you said it'd be useful if they went first.
I'm, we're going to get the determination, and if not, we're going to continue it. Which is, remember, I, I had wanted to do that, to go back to Conservation.
Right.
Because I guarantee, and I'd probably bet my next social security check on it, they did not look at the definition of lot to come up with uplands when they wrote that letter, that they had no problem.
By the way, Mr. Kroll's heartrending account of how this is an abandoned property, yada, yada, yada. It's not. It was only within the last five years that that fire occurred. Some of us remember when it happened. The children are still living and still own it. But it was all very touching.
Actually, that's not the case. We tried from building, because we had so many complaints from the neighbors that this was a burned-out building at the end of their street. They were worried about the neighborhood, you know, whatever the kids would get in. But we had complaint after complaint after complaint, but the town could not determine who owned it, because the original owners died, their lawyers died, their heirs died. It had to roll from-
No, but their children are there. If you look on the-
It was layers of people who had to go through the proper legal channels to get ownership.
But it wasn't a long time ago.
It was six years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I remember.
About a building, Sid.
It's like going back to 1995.
But that's pretty long to let a burnt building just sit there.
Anyway, the point is, when this comes up again, we are now forearmed. And anytime we have a situation where we need an opinion of counsel, we'll go get it. But I think the better, the lesson from this case is, we need to do it before we hear the case. I think it was a mistake to have gone forward without having Conservation Commission, and without going back and say, okay, look at the definition. You determine whether there's enough uplands, and then send it to us.
Would have saved us a lot of time.
So, and that's why I asked- And I guess, in a way, she's doing that with the letters. But I sent her-
Today, there was a letter that she wrote, saying that they hadn't even received anything. Should we have waited on that one? Because they still hadn't, for the same reason.
Well, that was the one that Bill Kroll said, well, no, we have to figure out who goes first.
Before them. But in our issue-
But shouldn't we get their, their opinion first? Otherwise, we made a ruling that they might say, well, they made that ruling, but you can't do it anyhow.
And that's okay, if that happens.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
The board can offer social permit or variance, and they can say, no, you can't.
Come back to us again. So I don't mind that, but in that, that case last month was kind of unique, because they were splitting a property, make two new lots, and that's really what got us into all of this. But I guarantee that Conservation did not look at our definition of lot when they signed off on it. Because it's, it's not something they would have done, I think.
The chance of getting a definition of contiguous squared away.
Yeah, given what we just read.
Yep. But anyway, that's why I sent this opinion to Amy and to Charlene Greedhall, the town-
I also, I had sent it to both of them, too.
Our town planner, so they would have this, too. So I bet you from now on, they will look at the definition of lot. Now, Charlene obviously did, the town planner. She had looked at it, and she had honed in on it. So that's, anyway, that's all I have on that. Was there anything else? I don't think so. Anyone?
Oh, anybody changes on the information, I will take those back and refresh those if there are any changes on the contact information. And I see that I'll be making one, and I'll, okay, and I'll, and I'll-
Well, we can take Dean off.
It's the whole thing's on my mind.
Got it, got it, okay.
Okay, wait, we have a question. And you could argue they don't have authority, but I mean, it's, it's been interpreted otherwise, so, like so many things, it's not clear.
They try to give the towns a various leeway to, because no, no two, no two towns are the same, as far as wetlands are concerned, et cetera, and what, you know, what properties are close to it, et cetera, so, you know, they just, they try to make it as flexible as possible.